You guys ready?
Turn it on.
All right, let's rock and roll. Call this meeting to an end if we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, this is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, February 23rd, it's 2021 and a little after 10:00. We're going to move right into consent agenda, Melanie?
Approval of payroll, February 6th, and February 19th, 2021. Approval of claims, January 28th, February 4th, February 11th, 19th, 2021. Approval of minutes, February 2nd, 2021. Treasurer's monthly report for January 31st, 2021 filed.
Thank you. And then we have an announcements, we have a, that's, this is under consent agenda too, isn't it? No, the announcements are not under consent agenda. Okay, so we'll throw the consent agenda to the floor, I'm sorry. Motion to approve. Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Can you write it? Okay, we got, we have a couple appointments that we did not get to at our last meeting. And one of them is for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. What happened there? One of the three appointments, Lisa Wodrich, has been appointed by Tri-Town, Porter, and Burns Harbor. So we ended up having an additional appointment, because I think Lisa Wodrich is the Burns Harbor appointment, she's not the Tri-Town appointment. So we have another appointment to make on the tourism board. So, I'll throw that to the floor.
I'll make a motion to appoint Harry Peterson.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. West Porter Fire District? Do we have that guy's name? We have a replacement appointment due to Anton Waitkess moving out of the district. This appointee will finish Anton's term, and I think they put a replacement name forward, and we have that name, so.
Mr. Robert Greeney.
Robert Greeney. Second. So we have a motion and a second for Robert Greeney, this is for the West Porter Fire District. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we got that done. No new business, we're going to move right into commissioners stuff here. We have Skilman Corporation. This is a study to be conducted at the Porter County Jail facility to evaluate the existing condition of the facility for a fee of $18,500. The fee will cover the cost for all services, including services of correctional facility report. So what's going on here is, in the next several years, our jail bond is going to be paid off, and the jail has now come to close to 30 years being open, and it's, it's, a lot of the mechanical equipment, a lot of the plumbing, a lot of the things has really been failing. I don't know if it's been failing as much, we've been keeping it up, but it's just getting old, and it's not as efficient as it used to be. So what we're going to be doing here while this bond comes up, and any type of upgrading of that facility needs to get done, before we even do that, we want to go out and get a report to see what the current facility's condition is. And that's what this report is. This is the starting point for us to come up with a working document that'll help us move forward on how we handle the renovation, repurposing, whatever we want to do with the correctional facility out there on Highway 49. So this is the first action of many, many, many more to come, but we wanted to get this going. We've worked with Skilman in the past on our, our jail, on our $30 million capital bond, it went well for us, so we just, we know the team. They're going to be deployed once this is, this agreement, if we move forward with it. And then we'll be getting out there and we'll start putting a report together. At that point, we'll be bringing that report back and we'll be sharing it with the public. So that's what this is for. Any comments or questions? Jim, did you have something?
Just, you know, to point out that that facility is approximately 20 years now occupied. And unlike this, this building, or 99.9% of the other buildings, other than juvenile detention, that building is used 365 days a year, 24, you know, 24/7. So there's, you know, there's a lot of activity in a facility like that, and it wears out. I don't care how it's built, it'll, it's, parts of it will wear out. And that's what we're, we're going to go in and evaluate, you know, what needs attention other than the obvious, and give us this board a, a report, how we'd like to move forward with addressing all of it.
Yep. So this is more for physical condition, is what this is for. So, any other questions? Throw it to the floor.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for Skilman Corporation on a study to be conducted at the Porter County Jail facility to evaluate existing conditions of the jail. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
You can do two and three together.
Two and three? Okay, next up, this is GIS, this is our health insurance. This is a consulting agreement to provide strategic benefit planning, design, funding, and administration and communication with respect to employee benefit programs. And this, we also have a business associate agreement to provide PHI, which is Protected Health Information. That's another agreement that we can move on. So we'll be, we'll be doing both these agreements in one motion. Correct?
Yeah, and then we were also able to negotiate the consulting agreement with GIS, the same flat rate that we did the first time around, so it's still at $50,000 for the year.
And is that agreement for another three?
Yes.
Another three years?
Yes.
Okay. So what, what this is up, this is also for us to continue to move forward with GIS insurance here out of Alpo, to continue our mining of our health insurance program, and continually trying to offer more services and drive our costs down. And I think they've earned that opportunity to have another bite at the apple. And I can quote dollars we shaved and everything else, I'm sure everybody's tired of hearing us talk about that, but it's, it's been very successful, and I think we need to continue to keep moving forward. So with that, I'll throw both agreements to the floor for action. Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second for consulting agreement for strategic benefit planning, and a business associate agreement to provide protected health information. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have an appointment, Mayor Matt Murphy, to the Recycling and Waste Reduction Board by the Porter County Board of Commissioners. And any comments or questions of that? Laura, you want to give any backup on that, or why, or?
Oh, hi Kerry. Hi, how are you?
Didn't mean to go on without you there.
Oh, that's okay. It's just an update, it's, I guess, an executive procedure that has to happen. The town of Couch has held the position for almost the past 10 years, so with the town of Couch, town president stepping down December 2020, we just need to have a new executive leadership appointed, and it comes from the commissioners, and the mayor of Valparaiso said he'd be willing to serve our board.
Yep.
Motion to approve appointing Valparaiso Mayor Matt Murphy.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an appointment to the Waste and Recycling Board of Mayor Matt Murphy of the City of Valparaiso. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, have a great day.
You too now. Soil and Water Conservation District. We got Michelle coming up. Hi, Michelle.
Hello.
This is an ordinance, we're going to be doing a public hearing here, so this is an ordinance establishing a non-reverting local control fund for the receipt of funds for the Porter County Soil and Water Conservation District. And what are these, what are we receiving funds for, Michelle?
We have a couple of agreements with the USDA whereby myself and Jared, our other Porter County Soil and Water employee, do different tasks, and we're reimbursed for those tasks.
Okay. So this is just creating a fund?
Correct.
To put that money into. One of the many funds that Madam Auditor takes care of every day.
I've talked with Tony quite a bit in the auditor's office, and she felt this was the best way to distribute those funds.
Okay. So what we're going to do here is, we're going to suspend the commissioners' meeting, open up a public hearing, we're going to give remonstrators three opportunities to come forward, speak in favor, and three opportunities to come forward and speak in, in opposition. So first one, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to, is not for this ordinance. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward that is against this ordinance. Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance. First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this ordinance. Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance. And with that, the public hearing is now closed, and I'll throw it to the board for action. This is first reading.
Motion to approve the ordinance establishing a non-reverting local control fund, first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Be back at the second meeting for our second hearing.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Michelle. Second reading, I'm sorry. Juvenile Detention Center. You're back?
Yes, I'm back.
How you doing?
I'm good. Allison has asked, would I be here today for her?
Okay.
And we...
Go ahead.
Uh, no, we're seeking a hurdle for our contract with Jasper County for 2021.
Yep. And I think our last meeting, we approved?
Yes.
The, uh...
Newton County.
Newton County, right, okay.
No changes?
Uh, no.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second on agreement between the commissioners and the Board of Jasper County for housing of children in the juvenile detention center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Have a great day.
Yep. E-911, Tony Stua, Director. This is for Motorola Solutions. Morning, Tony.
Good morning.
What you got?
So we were going to try to have someone internally do our electrical work for the grounding, for the radio equipment, and everything for our console furniture throughout the center. Unfortunately, it ended up being a little too much, so we had to bring in a professional who is certified through Motorola to do this, to complete that, so it's a change order for that portion.
Okay. What's the amount of the change order?
$13,725.
And when do you expect this to be done?
I think you have everything completed within the next week.
Okay. And then, at that point, are we ready to sit down with you and start talking, and Ray, start talking about moving?
Yes.
Okay. So that's on you to get with us.
Will do.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Motorola Solutions. This is a change order. Number one, to provide material and labor to install grounding for the new equipment and dispatch floor at the new Porter County 911. So this will ground all the new fancy desks that we've put in there, that they all have to be grounded too, right?
Yes. So each individual position will be grounded, inside the server room will have a halo around the top of the server room, grounding every single electrical component within the center for that period. Nothing on admin lines, we're all safe on there, but we're making sure all the integral components and public safety hardware is grounded properly.
Radio too?
All the radios.
Okay.
Every computer, all the consoles, I'd like to bring in to see those as well, each one will have a separate grounding coil inside the console furniture.
Redundant in electrical storm, that's where you want to be.
You do, we are protected, nothing will go off. Hope I'm, I'm praying to God we've had enough things happen already.
I, I do know what the word redundant means now.
Yes.
And, uh...
Overly redundant.
Yeah, overly redundant, yeah. Okay. Uh, to the floor.
Motion to approve.
You did? Second. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Tony.
We're doing redundant.
We're doing redundant. Yeah. See, I told you I learned that word, Doug. Good. Up next, our new IT director, Eric Serrano. I just had to throw that in there, Eric, I'm sorry. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Sort of excited.
Not that good anymore.
I think it's a year up here. Obviously, we met with you last week, and this is some exciting stuff that we're entering into, I think, but I'm a nerd.
Yeah, me too.
Let's go say, I know. Well, you know, for me to say that I understand it is, you know, a step, but why don't you give us, this is for CISA, why don't you give us what we're, what we're doing here, and share with the public here, what's going on?
So CISA is the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, kind of branched out from Homeland Security a few years ago. They're primarily concerned with keeping a critical infrastructure and cybersecurity infrastructure secure. Obviously, it's a very, you know, hot topic lately, and rightfully so. The point of this is to engage them to give us some services that they offer to state, local, tribal governments, that's, you know, that's free of charge to us. And what they will do initially, and we can expand the scope down the road, is start to, to scan our external assets, our network assets, to make sure that there's no vulnerabilities in those assets. We will get weekly reports, so that if we make changes on, you know, a firewall per se, or add a new, anything that faces the outside world, they'll scan it and then tell us if they see any, any vulnerabilities or issues with it, and then we can start to, you know, remediate those. So ideally, and probably what's going to happen is, in the beginning, we'll have, you know, a longer list of things, and then that'll be a beginning list to work off of as we start to, you know, knock things off that list and secure things.
So they're, they're pretty much just acting as a sentry to everything that we have, everything we, we want to bring into?
So they're not, they're not performing any actual security services, they're not protecting anything. What they're doing is they're, they're scanning everything and then telling us what they see that might be vulnerable.
Okay.
That's part of the engagement. The other part of the engagement is kind of a combination penetration test and/or phishing assessment. So they're going to run a phishing campaign against county staff to see if people will click on links that are, you know, potentially malicious, even though they won't be, because they're going to be sent by CISA. And then I will also get a report on any, you know, people or things that were clicked on, and then also, that portion of that is the penetration test, where they'll actually actively try to exploit some of the vulnerabilities that they, that they find them when they do that vulnerability scan, they'll, they'll try to get through and see how far they can actually exploit those vulnerabilities to let us know how secure our networks are. So it's, it's, these are the beginning stages to really ramp up, you know, the overall security of the county.
And I, and I don't know if, I know Eric said it, but again, to emphasize, this is, CISA is a division or a part of the Homeland Security?
Yes.
And so this is a federal government program that is, I think the only cost that we'll have is just gathering all the...
Yeah, it's time, it's time in front of our heart, but there's no financial...
Right.
What would something like this cost if we were taking it on ourselves?
Depending on the scope of work and then how much, I mean, you're talking, I mean, the beginning portion of it, you're probably talking between like $30,000 and $50,000, but if you go full penetration testing and things like that, you're into the six figures. Yeah, so it's, it's a huge value.
Great.
Can we do both these at the same time? Because they're both with CISA, right?
Yeah. One's identifying the scope of work, because we need to have clear rules of engagement, we don't want them testing somebody else's network, we want, they want us to sign off to say, yes, these are our external devices, because it's illegal to do this work if you're not authorized to.
Okay.
So we're, we're just letting them know, here are our, here's our asset list, and here's what you're allowed to do.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve CISA, that's C-I-S-A, a cyber hygiene agreement to conduct continuous scans for public-facing networks and systems for Porter County Government, and to also approve a cybersecurity assessment with CISA of rules of engagement between CISA and Porter County Government.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for both agreements. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Eric. Ray, Floyd, Buildings Facilities. Shifting from snow plowing to what now, Ray?
We're going to find out how many leaks we have.
Yeah, right now, we're in leak control, right?
Roof plowing.
Good morning, Ray. How you doing? What you got?
This is for the UPS agreement for the next, I proposed for the next three years, since they're giving us a pretty decent rate.
Is this different than Lionheart?
Yes.
So we're...
This is the UPS system for like the jail, whenever there is a...
Oh, this is the jail UPS?
UPS, yes, for the unprotected, the interruptive power supply, so for that few seconds that the generator doesn't kick on, this has the computers on and everything going.
Redundant.
Redundant.
I'll make a motion to approve the facility IT group in the amount of $6,810 per year.
Second. We have a motion and a second for facility IT group. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Yeah, thanks for everything.
Thanks, Ray, for everything. You, you guys were champs the last couple months, man, let me tell you. Thank you. Michelle Clancy, Treasurer. I thought you looked familiar out there.
Hard to tell with these masks.
Yeah. Hi, Michelle, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. I remember this master's touch, I think.
So this is the paperwork for the yearly billing. It's really the same as last year, and once we approve this, we can get the...
For tax bills. Tax bills. Gotcha.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the Masters Touch LLC. This is a confidential proposal to provide E-notices for approximately 97,000 parcels. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, Development Stormwater Management, Bob Thompson.
Good morning.
So what do we got here? We got a, Bridge 73, what do we got here?
Yeah, Bridge 73, we opened seal bids last commissioners' meeting, and we reviewed the, all of the bids that came in, and the lowest was Laporte Construction at $777,425.62. They were responsive and responsible, so we're recommending Laporte Construction.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. What was our engineer's estimate on that bridge?
Oh, I talked with Christie Antonio about that, and he said he was expecting bids to come in at between $750,000 to $850,000. So we had about five of them that came right in that range, so...
And we're getting FEMA money, but once this bridge is built out, we'll get 75%. I think our estimate that we submitted to FEMA was like $750,000, so we'll get 75% of that back.
So this is the bridge that got wiped out?
That's right.
With the flooding several years ago. So we're not, okay, so, good. All right, thank you. Next up, we have an amendment to the Dooms Cankey Trail Fund Ordinance, number 11-11. This is second reading. So I guess we could just go from the floor on this guy's.
Motion to approve the amount to the Dooms Cankey Trail Fund Ordinance, on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on an amendment for the Dooms Cankey Trail Fund Ordinance, 11-11. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Next up, CSXT. This is a construction agreement for work to be done on Porter County Bridges 272 and 273. This is the big one on Willow Creek and Crisman and Portage.
Correct.
What do you got, Bob?
These are two bridges that we're working on. What it is, is it's reconstruction, total reconstruction of the concrete approaches going into the bridges, so there's four approaches. And then we're doing some abutment, changes on the abutment, and also some sealing of the bridge deck, a micro overlay on it. Since it's over railroad tracks, we have to get agreements with the railroad on this, because they got to have watchers out there to make sure that we're doing everything correctly, and, what can I say? It's, to be able to...
We could say a lot.
We can.
But we're not going to.
I have a...
Just show up the day you're going to do it.
Yeah, we have to have a, essentially, we have to have a watcher out there from the railroad. It's CSX railroad for both of the bridges, and we have to have one of their watchers out there, that's like $100,000 for 90 days on that, and then the engineering company that works for the railroad to observe this agreement has a 222% overhead rate that they charge on top of that. So...
I'm in the wrong business.
We, yeah. This agreement is for $261,190, but they did take off the $16,000 that we sent to them earlier to review the permit. So that's still in their bank and everything like that. So we, yeah, once this agreement is done, for us to get the permit to work on the railroad then, as soon as it's assigned, and it's specific, don't date it, just sign it, and then I have to run it down to Vicki with the invoice to get this cut and send the agreement down with the check at the same time, and then they'll review it and we'll get our permit. So we're hoping, hoping we'll be able to put these two bridges out for bids probably in April, May?
Oh.
We're thinking, they're, they're finished with the review, so it's just getting the agreement in place so we can go forward.
Getting railroaded.
Yeah. No pun intended.
Okay. Any comments or questions on that one?
Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, it's an agreement.
It is.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for CSX construction agreement for oversight, for railroad oversight on Porter County Bridges 272 and 273. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have open seal bids for our 2020-2 Community Crossing Grant Program for paving work to be done on the following roads. Meridian Road, 900 North to 1050 North, 550 South from Sloan Street to 250 West, Smoke Road from State Road 2 to Division, Balms Bridge Road, State Road 8 to 900, 700 North from 400 West to 500 West, and Tower Road, 250 West from State Road 130 to 500 North. And I think you're seeing that most of these roads are main arteries, and we want to get those back up to speed. I would like to make mention, as an aside to this, I want to make sure I didn't have another, okay, before we act on this, our highway engineer and the commissioners have been talking and meeting, and over, it seems like since COVID, over the last couple years, over the last couple of years, with a lot of the state highway projects that have gone on on forty-nine, thirty, uh, sort of back-to-back years, uh, then with a lot of the traffic that came from neighboring states over COVID area, uh, our road stock within, uh, uh, the, the center part of the county has really taken a beating. Uh, we're, we're seeing wear, uh, on our, our main tributaries, we're, we're seeing, not tributaries, but main arterials, this stormwater was now earlier, um, it, it's just, we're just taking a tremendous amount of pounding on these roads. So, uh, we're gonna have to get back at it here. I know we've been working and talking with the council to see if we can find some more funds, uh, in addition to what we have, to see if we can somehow start bolstering our paving program going forward, uh, in the county at a little bit more accelerated rate than what we've done in the past. Uh, so, stay tuned for more information on that, but, uh, I think, uh, this also, um, you know, follows up with, with the whole, uh, area of, of the Willow Creek Road Extension, the Nine Mile Road Extension, and, and a lot of these roads that we're seeing tremendous, uh, wear and tear on is a lot of them are on the, on the west side of the center part of the county. So, we're just hoping and, and for planning purposes, uh, when, when that road ever does get done and move forward, we're, we're gonna see a lot of congestion and relief coming off a lot of these other roads, and they'll be designed and built properly. A lot of these roads that we're dealing now that are main arterial roads, they weren't main arterial roads ten years ago. Uh, so, uh, you know, we're still dealing with subbase issues, um, when they widen the county roads, they, they might have not done some of the subbase work on the edges that if you come down our county and you see a lot of our roads that were, they're sort of knocking off on the edges, that's what that means. And that, and we're, we're tracking that, we're looking at it, we're trying to monitor it, uh, but this is a, this, this is a liability to the county that we have to try and figure out, because that has to be changed if those roads are gonna carry that type of traffic. If not, we're gonna be repaving these main arterial roads every five, six years, and, and it's just not sustainable. Um, so, uh, we're, we're rolling up our sleeves again, and we're, we're gonna go to work, and, uh, we've been talking and working with the highway department and the engineer and, and the engineering department and, and Bob's department. So, stay tuned, I think there's gonna be more information coming and, uh, but I also wanna let the community know that our roads over this last year and a half, two years, have really taken the pounding, and, uh, I think people that live around here know, they've seen the traffic, and it always correlates. You always see the traffic, and you're always upset about the traffic, we're upset because we start seeing it a year or two later, and, and, uh, that's, that's where we're at right now. So, I just wanted to sort of bring that off right here before we, uh, open these bids up and, and we can get going now, so sorry for the delay. Okay. First one. Uh, Walshy Kelly. So, this, these are, this is a lump sum, nine hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. Reece Riley, eight eighty-three, nine oh five, forty-nine. Eight eighty-three, nine oh five, forty-nine. That's it?
Yep.
Two. You guys will take those on your advisement, and then we're gonna, at the next meeting, and we'll, we'll act on the contract. Okay? Thank you. Okay. Getting to the end here. Next up, this is the Zona Park Property Rezone, and this is, uh, nine fifty north between five fifty east and Laporte County Line Road, um, and this is a zoning map amendment. Bob, you wanna take us through that? I see we got Walter here from the Parks Department, and I think Dave is here, the legal counsel for the parks. Uh, this will be a public hearing again, um, and, uh, we're gonna, why don't you give us the lowdown, Bob?
Yeah, this is Plan Commission Resolution twenty-one dash zero one. Uh, the petitioner was Porter County Parks and Recreation. It's the Zona Park property, they're requesting a zoning map amendment from RR Rural Residential to P-one Parks and Recreation. This was heard at the, um, Plan Commission's, uh, January twenty-seventh meeting, and it was forwarded to the county commissioners with a favorable recommendation, and I believe it was a seven-zero vote, but it was definitely unanimous.
I don't know if seven people were there, but it was unanimous.
It's, it's either six or seven. I can't remember. Six, six-zero. Okay. So, we're gonna, uh, and so, what we're basically doing is we're just trying to get the proper zoning in place for the use of the zonal wildlife through the Parks Department, cause there was a, there was a little bit of a long-term lengthy glitch, and the, the property never got transferred properly, so this is the cherry on top, I guess, of the zonal wildlife.
Going from rural residential to park.
To park. Right. So, so what we're gonna do here, uh, public hearing again, suspend the commissioner's meeting, open up a public hearing, uh, three, four, three against. Um, first, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against, uh, this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward and speak against this ordinance? First call, anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this ordinance? Second of all, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance, come forward. Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? And with that, the public hearing is closed, and we open up the commissioners' meeting. Uh, any comment or question?
Motion to approve the Zona Park Property Rezone on first reading.
Uh, second, with, uh, with a brief statement in that I, I think the rezone, uh, further establishes our commitment toward this property, to rezone it to park property, where it's maintained in perpetuity forever, um, so, uh, smart move.
It was a long road, but we got there. A long and winding road.
One more reading.
One more reading. So, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign. Motion carries. We'll be hearing it, this, at the, uh, next meeting, second reading.
If I could say one other thing, the transfer of this property and what you're doing now has triggered the Park Department to look at all of our properties, and we do have some cleanup to do on a couple of those that are still rural residential. So, we'll be back with Bob's help, and Bob's been very helpful to us, walking us through that process, but we're gonna, this has triggered us cleaning all of that.
Good. A little housekeeping. Good deal. All right, next up, we have a couple rezones here, uh, they're separate, uh, we have to treat them separately because they're different pieces of property, I guess, right, Scott? So, um, this is, uh, the Marshall Sarkeesian Rezone. Bob, you wanna give us the, uh, outline on that?
Okay, I'll do the...
The Marshall Rezone, really.
First one here, yes. Plan Commission Resolution twenty dash zero two. Uh, petitioner is Frank A. Marshall. They're requesting a zoning map amendment from R-one Low Density Single Family Residential District to CM, Moderate Intensity Commercial District. Uh, this is a parcel of land, it's a, uh, it's got an existing house on it right now, and it's at like one seventy-six... I thought I saw, yes, one seventy-six US Highway thirty. Better explain it. It's right at the entrance, one of the entrance, it's a Silver Manor on Moreland Drive in the southeast corner of US thirty and Moreland Drive. The Plan Commission heard this at their January twenty-seventh hearing, and, um, they voted to recommend a favorable recommendation on this one with...
You're describing the second one on our agenda?
I haven't...
What are we talking about right now?
Okay. I had it as a resolution.
On our, written agenda number six is Highway thirty and one fifty west.
All right, I'll go to that one.
Making sure we're all on the same page.
I was going by the number of our resolutions.
So, for the people in the audience, we're on number seven right now, correct?
Well, that's what he presented. We can jump to seven on the agenda, as long as we're all clear.
Okay.
Let's just jump to seven, since he's already described it.
Okay.
And then we keep moving.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Happened. Um, this was heard before the Plan Commission. Uh, they forwarded it with a favorable recommendation on this, and with written commitments on this, and the vote for it was five to one in favor.
And Bob, could you just quickly go over those written commitments?
Since this has, um, frontage along Moreland Drive and Silver Manor, there were a couple of items that they wanted was no access to Moreland Drive. There were people in the subdivision that were there that did not want to see the access coming out onto Moreland Drive. They also wanted a buffer on that, so, uh, part of that was the agreement was the, uh, western boundary would be buffered, and no access to Moreland Drive, and also no access to US thirty, since it's limited access.
And then the access would come, I know we haven't got there yet, but the next...
The access would come through the bigger parcel, which is our next case.
Which would come off of Hayes Leonard, though?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Does that make sense now?
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Okay, so, public hearing again for a rezone. We're gonna suspend the commissioner's meeting again, we're gonna open up a public hearing, which we just did, and, uh, same, same protocol, three against, three for. Um, so, what we're gonna do, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? This is number seven on the, uh, agenda. Again, second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? First call, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? And with that, the public hearing's closed. We're gonna open up the board, uh, for discussion and action.
I think the reason that nobody's here, and there were people at the Plan Commission meeting to remonstrate, was the fact that, uh, some of their concerns, well, probably all of them, were met, and, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second, I, and, and I've always agreed that your businesses belong in your state roads. I've always been a huge supporter of that. If they don't, if they don't belong there, where do, where do they belong?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, uh, and this is first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we're gonna go to number six on the agenda, which is the coordinating piece on this piece of property.
Correct.
Um, it's, it's, it's just right next to the other piece, um, and, uh, same thing here. We're doing a rezone for the same type of, uh, uh, re, for the zoning that, that they're looking for here. Um, and so, again, we'll, uh, Bob, is there anything you wanted to add to this? I'm sorry, excuse me.
Uh, it's just, it, this is a over fourteen acre parcel, the petitioner is Hayes Leonard, um, thirty LLC on this, uh, and again, it was, this one was recommended for approval to the county commissioners by six-zero vote with written commitments. Again, the written commitment on this one was just no access to US thirty, since it is limited access there, it's fenced off. That, and we had a thorough fair study that was done ago, a while ago, that encouraged these rezonings at these nodes where there's, uh, RE traffic signalization there.
Oh.
And that was part of the, the staff report that came down, so that's why they were looking at this, um, on this, that, uh, access would be off of Hayes Leonard, because we've already got the control at US thirty.
Yep. All right, so, with that, again, this is first reading, we're gonna open up a public hearing, three, four, three against, same protocol, so first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? First call, anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward, speak in favor of this rezone? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? With that, the public hearing's closed, and we'll throw it to the board on first reading.
Motion to approve.
Oh, second. This one was even more clear-cut, and everything around it is commercial, it, it just makes sense.
Yep. Now, yep. So, so with that, uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign. Motion carries, first reading. Our next commissioner's meeting, uh, is, I think, March sixteenth, same time here. We'll have second readings on the agenda. So, thank you. Next up, Reece Riley. Uh, this is a change order for the CCMG two thousand twenty paving.
This is the spring, uh, twenty twenty dash one CCMG. This was from the, what Matt would refer to as the FDR, uh, construction. It's the full-depth reclamation on that, and the reason for the change order is after every job we go through and look at the quantities that were used on this, and there was a reduction in the, um, estimated quantities on that, so that's why this is, change order isn't a positive for us. But this is clearing everything up for us for the final invoice.
It'll, the value of the change order is a negative seventeen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and nineteen cents, which would bring the total contract price to seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-one cents. Staff is recommending approval of this change order to the board this morning.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a change order for Reece Riley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
With the end of our agenda here, anybody wishing to address this board? And with that, our meeting is in recess.